Good evening. So, as is typical, we have many people that deserve recognition tonight. And this is always the best part of these monthly meetings. Before I turn over the mic to Mr. DeCorso, I just want to, you know, inform you that we always do our best to recognize everyone in a timely manner. But unfortunately, we have to sometimes split those up between meetings. And I want you to be aware that, you know, remember, we're going to be celebrating some very exciting recognitions of our staff members. So, just last Friday, we were able to attend, as we do annually, the Burton County Utilities and Arts Ramp presentation. And teachers can work across the county to determine ways in which they would use grant money if, in fact, their idea were selected. And the grants can range up to $1,000. And the only stipulation is that they have to, in some way, promote recycling. And I was just so excited to be the one district in Wallerburg County that had nine teachers selected, each for $1,000. So, please make sure you come back next month so you can see those nine teachers and we can recognize them once again. We're going to kick off tonight with some really, really great fine arts presentations. So, to do that, I'm going to hand the mic over to Mr. DeCorso, our supervisor of the Fine Arts Department.
Thank you, Mrs. DeMarco. Welcome, everybody. So, each and every year, I know I sit in the audience and I watch the wonderful musicals and plays that our students perform, and our wonderful faculty preparing and choreographing. And we know that it takes a tremendous amount of effort to put these performances together. And, you know, as a community and as a district, each year, we see the talent that we have here, both with our faculty and with our students. So, this year is with great pride that, you know, not only do we know that, but we're being recognized by a national association. And we received several awards this year for our last year's performance of The Drowsy Chaperone. So, I would like to start by calling up Mr. Brian Lang, who's going to accept the award for the entire ensemble, who last year, The Drowsy Chaperone won Outstanding Ensemble from the National Youth Arts Theater Awards Organization. So, Mr. Brian Lang, please come on. So, with that award, we received this wonderful trophy that we're going to keep at the board office. And we are so proud of that. Before our state-of-the-art junior high school is even built, we have a beautiful award that's going to honor our theater and our arts program. So, you know, we can't wait to have that trophy case ready for that trophy. And certainly, that building is really going to celebrate and encourage the arts. So, I know that it is going to continue in pride in that building. So, thank you, Mr. Lang. So, aside from the ensemble as a whole, we have two individual awards to hand out. So, the first award goes to the outstanding supporting actress for The Drowsy Chaperone. And again, this is a national award, so these students should be really proud of themselves, and this is a tremendous honor. So, I'd like to first call up Sarah Samorow. So, then, our next award goes to the outstanding lead actress in The Drowsy Chaperone, and that's Alexis O'Worme. Okay? So, I can't wait to see what our ensemble and our students put together this year. So, we're raising the bar for sure. And I know what the show is going to be, but I'm not going to spoil it right now, so we're just going to have to wait and see. And please come out and support the arts, because our students are achieving great this year. They want to continue to support that program. So, I thank our faculty and our students an amazing job. I think they deserve another round of applause.
And before I get out of this certificate, I'm just going to ask our Columbus School Custodian, Mr. Brian Wartell, to please come on up here while we speak about him. We'll put him on the spot for sure. So, this evening, we've asked Mr. Wartell to please join us at this meeting. And we're certainly going to be giving him a certificate of recognition. But just like the previous awards, you know, there's so much significance and so much meaning behind the issuance of just that one paper. But this one is exceptionally significant. We wake up each day, we go to our respective jobs, or we do our respective tasks. And we kind of have our eyes focused on what it is that's expected of us and what it is that we need to do. And sometimes, it's easy to overlook the other stuff. But when we're observing of the other stuff, we realize what a difference one person can make. And I think that's what's really significant here. So, as you know, our custodians are very, very busy during lunchtime. You can only imagine what lunchtime is like in a lower elementary school nonetheless. And on one particular Friday, a student who was enjoying a slice of pizza actually started showing signs of being unable to fully swallow or fully get at his breath. And in the busyness of the space, Mr. Wartell, who is, in fact, the first responder himself, immediately spotted those signs. And in an instant, was over there helping the student to actually cough up what it was that was causing him to be unable to breathe. And just the quick response, the awareness, the observance, the, you know, the swift knowledge and putting that knowledge into application can really, really make such a difference. So, Mr. Wartell, we cannot thank you enough for caring for our students, for not just paying attention to your work, but paying attention to those around you, and for really employing all of your many skills that you bring to this position, and particularly in that moment on that day. Thank you so much. Okay? So, at this time, we're going to move into a presentation. So, if you can just bear with us a moment, I would like to ask the board to please come on down and take some seats so they can see what you will see. Okay? So, when assessment results come out in completion each year, by code, the Board of Education has to be informed as to the district's performance of all of those assessment results. And the information that is received can get many gray. And then, it's always important for us to make sense of that assessment information. Included, however, in that assessment presentation are other factors that we always want to bring to the attention. So, instead of having this just be information that we share exclusively with the board, we certainly want to share it with the public, because this is information that's very important for you to know. So, this evening, by code, we will be talking about the 2016-17 assessment results, but we'll also be speaking about a general district overview of where we've been, where we are, where we're going to. So, as someone who is forever an educator and whose backgrounds and master's degrees are in language arts, to me, it's always about a story. And I think every single one of us has a story to tell. And in my opinion, that really is what life is all about. Every day, we're adding another page to our story. And we have to consider our district's story. As we do that, we realize it is in progress, and we recognize that we conquer one chapter at a time. As characters in the story, everyone, everyone in the community is contributing to the plot, to the events that happen. And no one character can ever control the plot, so we must prepare for it and embrace the plot twists. They do come when we least expect them. While all the while, maintaining the desire to own our district, what is our culture? What do we want to convey? Remaining focused on our story's theme, in the end, what do we want to be our legacy? And planning on many, many sequels to our story, because we certainly don't want it to end. So, not to spoil the ending, but everything's going to be just okay. We conquer one chapter at a time. So, we're going to start with CUSAC. So, CUSAC is the Quality Single Accountability Continuum. CUSAC is very interesting, because there are multiple indicators in a variety of areas: government, fiscal, instruction and program operations. And every section has multiple indicators upon which your score. When New Jersey asked to switch over to PARC, they knew that they were not going to have enough information from the PARC results to actually make a good assessment of a district's performance until at least three years in. That's since changed, because now they're going to FOUR. So, it is important to note that any district who was in a deficit at the 2013-14 test time, or when those results came out, remains there. In Burton County, we call it CUSAC purgatory. So, we are in CUSAC purgatory simply because in 2013-14, our NJAS scores were 2% below the required 80%. We were at 78%. So, for that reason, we say CUSAC purgatory. Now, what's good about CUSAC purgatory? Well, it's a lot of work, but you benefit by getting lots of visits from the county every year. So, once you don't pass CUSAC, you have to create a district improvement plan. I had the benefit of finding that out when I was appointed Assistant Superintendent, because the results came in right after that, which was 2015 for the previous year. We're always a year behind. So, I had to work very hard that summer in putting together a district's improvement plan, which we did. That gets forward to the state. The state looks it over and says, "Okay, you're good to go, but we're going to hold you responsible." And in and out come the educational specialists of the county. Picture here is Sharon Rosario, Educational Specialist on the right-hand side, and Nora Peck, who was our interim superintendent, on the left side. They made multiple visits to our district since 2015. And with each visit, they gave us indicators of what they were recognizing. So, what they really recognized was that we showed incredible improvements and enhancements. As they visited classrooms, they started seeing there was a shift in progress from teacher-centered instruction to student-centered instruction, which is what the goal is. They also saw the teachers really relinquishing control, not so quick to give the answers or to show kids how to do it, but to let them inquire, let them figure it out, have more of an inquiry-based learning approach. And finally, there was clear evidence of multidisciplinary approaches. So, that was really great, but still, the visits have to come. I also understood that I needed to educate myself more, so I started wanting to spread my wings. When the state opens up a panel for interested superintendents to serve on a CUSAC panel, I went ahead and volunteered for that. Didn't quite know what I was getting myself in for, because it required a lot of workshops and a lot of times I'm in Trenton. But it was really well worth it, because we made a lot of contacts, and I learned from other districts and how they overcame some of their struggles. So, it was Friday of Labor Day weekend of this year, and we were scheduled for a visit from CUSAC on September 28th. That's pretty early in the year to get everything ready and set. So, it's Friday of Labor Day weekend, the district is closed, and my direct line to my office rang, which was very odd, because very few people have that line. And, you know, I was concerned as to who it was and who is it, but it's our interim county superintendent. Not a good sign on Friday of Labor Day weekend to begin a call from her. And she prefaced her conversation by indicating that to me. You know, "You're probably wondering why I'm calling you." And it was really a great, great phone call, because the reason she was calling me was to let me know that all the work we had done in prep for their visit on September 28th was not going to be necessary, because she actually informed the state that based on what she has seen in person and what she continues to see from our district, she is completely confident that we are just making strides and strides in positive directions. So, she canceled that visit. She got permission from the Commissioner of Education to do that. I heard from their office, they were very congratulating her to us for our work. And that was really, really a huge, huge testament to our students, to our teachers, to our parents who are helping us at home, keeping learning as part of their family culture. So, now, we move to the assessment results and general findings. And again, all comprehensive data will be posted to this Board of Ed meeting. That'll really get into the intricacies, so you can see it more closely. But for the purpose of tonight, we'll talk about PARC results. What are we really looking for? Well, basically, we range scores of 1 through 5. Now, remember, when PARC first came out, it was going to be a growth model. As long as we see your students are growing, you're in good shape. Oh, plot twist, now it's, no, these numbers are failing and these numbers are passing. So, that's what's taking effect now. Basically, a 1, 2, 3, you're failing. 4s and 5s, you're passing. So, regardless of the language, that's essentially where we are. Grades 3 through 11 are tested, and unfortunately, we have the opt-out availability to our students. We're very lucky that most of our students do participate in this assessment. But the students who are taking AP tests, so those that are typically high achievers, often opt out because the tests coincide. So, in many situations, our best students are not taking the PARC. In addition, because opt-out is an option, there are multiple pathways to graduation. So, if a student does not take the PARC assessment, he or she may sit for the SAT and try to score the required range in either math or ELA on the SAT. That minimum score is a 400. So, we have many students who don't take the PARC, who choose to take the SAT, who make a minimum score of 400, but certainly, 400 isn't the type of score that we would be seeking students to be striving for on an SAT. So, that just gives you a little bit of background as to how the PARC works. So, when we look at our PARC scores, we want to see a decrease in 1s and 2s. We don't want students there. We want to see most of our 3s moving closer to that 4 range, and we certainly want to see a vast increase in our 4s and 5s. And when we're comparing ourselves across states that are taking PARC or across the state of New Jersey, we certainly want to be at or above average in 4 and 5, and we want to be below the averages in 1, 2, and 3. ELA, awesome, awesome. We have aspiring writers, communicators, artists. I mean, our students are just blowing it out of the ballpark. We are below cross-state and New Jersey average in scores of 1 and 2. That's exactly what we want. We are equal to the cross-state average in the score range of 3, which is good. But we are vastly exceeding the number of students that typically range in 4 and 5 in the state of New Jersey and across all states taking PARC. We see the number of students scoring 5 across the PARC states. Grades 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, 9, and 11 all showed improvements in performance when compared to 2015-16, ranging from 2% to 8%. And every single tested grade had higher writing scores than the average writing score in the state of New Jersey. Great, great work, awesome. Math PARC performance. Right now, good, we're below the state average in 1s and 2s. That's definitely a plus. Right now, or I'm sorry, in the score range of 1. We are equal to the cross-state average in the score range of 2. But we do have more students scoring 2 than is typical in the state of New Jersey. So, that's an area of concern for us. We also exceed the number of students in New Jersey across states in the score range of 3. What is interesting, though, is when we compare our own data in the 3 score to our 2015-16, seeing it in the score of 3, they're moving. So, we're definitely seeing students moving across the continuum, but it's definitely not at the rate that we would like them to be. Unfortunately, we exceed the average number of students scoring 4 across PARC states, or I should say, we fortunately do. But we do have less students scoring 4 when compared to other New Jersey districts. So, compared to other states, we're doing really well. We have more students getting a 4. But when we look at our students compared to other New Jersey districts, we have less students getting 4 than they do. And we do have fewer students earning scores of 5 when compared across state as well as all states taking PARC. So, those are areas of improvement we definitely want to work on. Grades 6, 7, and 8 all showed improvement from one year to the next, ranging from 2% to 8% increases. And grades 3, 4, 9, 10, 11 all showed decreases in their performance. So, those are areas we really want to focus on and try to find out why. New Jersey asked science and the biology test. Now, two things are changing in 2017-18. The biology test, which has always been an end-of-course exam, is now going to be comprehensive science, a test that's going to check how much science a student should know by grade 11. So, that's going to be one major change. Another major change is that grade 4 NJAS is now going to be given in grade 5. So, unfortunately, for those students who took it last year, they're going to be sitting for NJAS again this year. But no worries, because they are rocking it. Grade 4, look at these numbers. 91% of district students scored in the proficient and advanced proficient range. Fantastic work. This far exceeds the state average of 85.5%. So, grade 4, they're interested there. We have to keep fostering that interest in science. We're doing great. Grade 8 also did great work. They exceeded the state average of 73.2% by having 74% of students range in the proficient or advanced proficient range. Biology, this is always our issue. The state average is 56.7%. Not so impressive, but even less impressive is our performance, only 36%. You may ask yourself, "Why?" Unfortunately, it is very, very difficult for these students in grade 11 to take that biology end-of-course test seriously, as they should be. Because truthfully, they unfortunately know it doesn't show up anywhere, it doesn't count, it's not used for anything. And by grade 11, it's not being used for something, they struggle to see the significance of it. So, I'm really anxious to see what's going to happen when that moves from a bio end-of-course test to that cumulative test at grade 11. I think we're going to see some shifts there. So, our analytical takeaways. Math instruction and practice must reflect how PARC is presenting it. We did a quick little study. How do students do when the problems are given to them traditionally? And how do they do when they're given them using the PARC language? Clearly, with the traditional approach, they get it, they know what to do, they know what formula to apply, they're solving the problem. The minute it moves into that PARC language, where now they have to explain why they used a certain mathematical process or why they applied a skill, that's where they're getting stuck. So, we want to start talking more math in that. So, we want to start talking more math language at home. We don't want to just focus on the "How did you do that?", but we want to start saying, "Well, why did you do that? Why did you decide to multiply there? Why not divide? Why did you add before you subtracted?", whatever it might be. So, that's really going to be a big piece for us. We also want to recognize the "less is more" approach. So, once our students achieve a standard, we want to get ready to move on, so we can use that time in other ways. Maybe we don't have to do 50 of the same types of problems. Maybe once they accomplish 25, we say, "You got this, let's move on to something else." So, we definitely want to look at some of that. And we also want to make sure that we're doing enough of the teaching. So, we want to make sure that those students that are in the middle, that might not be getting it as much as the peers that have been above them, but showing more confidence even the peers that are below them, aren't saving the bar for everyone moving on. So, we really have to make sure we have good individualized instruction going on. ELA, we clearly have students on the horizon for doing great things with their skills in reading and writing. So, now it's time to raise the bar for success, right? We know what they can do, now we've got to get them to sweat a little bit more. Now, we really want to strive to make sure those 1s and 2s move into that 3 category, and all of those 3s shift over to the 4 and 5. And that's the other interesting piece. Some of them are only 1, 2, or 3 points away from the 4, and 1 or 2, 3 points away from the 5. So, just a little bit more, you know, sweat and perseverance, they're really going to sneak over that hump, get to that next score. We have to get them to feel that in the class, so we've got to push them, we've got to get some more grit going with the students. We'll certainly continue interdisciplinary approach to science instruction. We know that that's so important, it has to be embedded there across all content areas. And, you know, look at those grade 4 scores. That's showing their natural and organic interest in science and inquiry and wanting to solve things. They're seeing it as so much fun. How do we get that to continue as they get older? How do we keep the interest of the students in science so we can get to the higher ones and really excel there? For peak PARC informants, we know that it must be included in all content areas. The greatest fallacy is to think that your ELA and math teachers are responsible for PARC scores. That is untrue. Social studies, reading skills, writing skills, analytical skills are going to contribute to PARC scores in the same way in the ELA section, in the same way that their science work is going to contribute to their math performance. We also have to make sure that students are familiar with these types of questions, so they're not learning it one way in the classroom and then coming to a test where it's looking, you know, unfamiliar to them or foreign. And we want them to be organic, consistent, and routine across the curriculum. This is another really big piece that really strikes a chord with me. We need to make sure that our culture continues to recognize that every single student in a classroom is that teacher's student, whether that student sits in that classroom all day long, for just a period, or maybe is there once in a while. So, those students who have ESL instruction don't only learn English as a second language. They need to learn every other content area as well. The student who is, you know, going to another classroom for resource instruction, or who is getting some remedial support, they are not the students of the resource or remedial teachers. They are just as much the student of that general ed teacher while they're in that classroom. So, this is something we really have to start taking ownership of and really work as a team to figure out what works best for certain types of students, or each individual student, or a class of students, and make sure we keep talking about those successful strategies and sharing... So we really have to make sure we have good individualized instruction going on. ELA, we clearly have students on the horizon for doing great things with their skills in reading and writing. So now it's time to raise the bar for success, right? We know what they can do. Now we've got to get them to sweat a little bit more. Now we really want to strive to make sure those 1s and 2s move into that 3 category, and all of those 3s shift over to the 4 and 5. And that's the other interesting piece. Some of them are only 1, 2, and 3 points away from the 4, and 1 or 2, 3 points away from the 5. So just a little bit more, you know, sweat and perseverance. They're really going to to leap over that hump, get to that next score. We have to get them to feel that in the classroom. We've got to push them. We've got to get some more grit going with the students. We'll certainly continue interdisciplinary approach to science instruction. We know that that is so important, has to be embedded there across all content areas. And you know, look at those grade 4 scores. That's showing their natural and organic interest in science and inquiry and wanting to solve things. They're seeing it as so much fun. How do we get that to continue as they get older? How do we keep the interest of the students in science so we can get to the higher ones and really excel there? For peak PARC informants, we know that it must be included in all content areas. The greatest fallacy is to think that your ELA and math teachers are responsible for PARC scores. That is untrue. Social studies, reading skills, writing skills, analytical skills are going to contribute to PARC scores in the same way in the ELA section, in the same way that their science work is going to contribute to their math performance. We also have to make sure that students are familiar with these types of questions so they're not learning it one way in the classroom and then coming to a test where it's looking, you know, unfamiliar to them or foreign. And we want them to be organic, consistent, and routine across the curriculum. This is another really big piece that really strikes a chord with me. We need to make sure that our culture continues to recognize that every single student in a classroom is that teacher's student, whether that student sits in that classroom all day long, for just a period, or maybe is there once in a while. So those students who have ESL instruction don't only learn English as a second language. They need to learn every other content area as well. The student who is, you know, going to another classroom for resource instruction or who is getting some remedial support, they are not the students of the resource or remedial teachers. They are just as much the student of that general ed teacher while they're in that classroom. So this is something we really have to start taking ownership of and really work as a team to figure out what we're stressed for certain types of students or each individual student or class of students, and make sure we keep talking about those successful strategies and sharing them with one another. Prior to getting these PARC results, last year, even though you're supposed to come into a new position and sit back and kind of just observe and watch and wait and not take any action, some things were pretty evident. And you know, being part of this district for so long, I felt very honored to be able to go ahead and participate in some conversations a little sooner than most new superintendents would be able to. We knew we needed someone to watch over our curriculum and instruction. I needed someone doing that much more than I needed an assistant for myself. So that's when we switched from Assistant Superintendent to a Director of those areas. We also realized that the type of instruction at the elementary levels is very different than that at the upper-grade level. The content's very different, the styles, the strategies. So we said, instead of having one supervisor working with a pre-K teacher, then a 10th grade teacher, then a 12th grade teacher, then back to a 4th grade teacher, let's kind of consolidate. Let's let people specialize more. So that's what we did with our supervisory team. We also expanded our technology resources, which lets more students use technology more frequently. We also removed the A D days in the upper elementary, so there was more accessibility to daily instruction of well-subject matter instead of having delays. And certainly, we created the ELL training for all teachers to make sure that we were all helping those students that had a barrier with the language. On the horizon, facilities that are certainly conducive to modern instructional practice: applied learning environments, collaborative environments, and project-based exploration. That's what's on our horizon. Enhanced learning environments to match content area and even further attendant services for students. We talked about the plot twists. Well, we encountered one of those. And if you were with us in August, I know a lot of us were on vacation at that time and drove back up for the meeting. We had a great presentation of the forthcoming junior high school because we had to go ahead and redo the joint agreement due to a few minor barriers that we encountered. But we accomplished that, and really, the only result from that because we've been working so hard on it was, you know, making a couple weeks delay when we're going to be going out to bid. So really, all things said and done, that plot twist was a minor one, but we recognize that when we encounter a problem, we trust the process. We go along with it. We do what we have to do. We work as a team, as administrators, teachers, Board of Education members, and we resolve the issues. Every single character contributes to our story, and I can't overestimate the impact that every teacher, every counselor, every custodian, every secretary, every nurse, every administrator has upon the success of our district. We can't do it without them. We expanded our AP programming last year by over 33%. We couldn't have done that if teachers weren't willing this summer to go and get trained by college board to be able to teach AP classes. They were interested. We embraced it. They were fantastic, and they're running these programs successfully. We're offering more opportunities. The same thing with our special ed. We knew we had a gap in the students who were leaving one early learning environment and going, getting ready for the next one we offered. Some just weren't ready for that environment, but yet they needed to move on. So we went ahead and we added an additional type of kindergarten classroom for students with special needs that benefit from that before moving into that self-contained blended environment. We also have the, you know, pre-K 3 and pre-K 4 opportunities now, and why do that? We want to get students in with us as soon as possible. We want to start them in educational environments that we can then build upon and get that foundation set for them. So that was another really big accomplishment. And then, you know, personally, I understand that my work here has to expand way out of the district. So I felt very fortunate last year to give a lot of time to this. Of course, my family was really helpful with me doing that. So a lot of nights and weekends were spent exploring other ways that I could have our district kind of networking and blending with other districts as well. So currently, I was once asked to serve on the Virgin County Association of School Administrators Executive Board as legislative liaison. So I have the opportunity to go down to Trenton frequently, hear what's going on in legislation, and take part in being the change we want to see. Some of the changes that we're working on is to make sure that, you know, when we're looking at HIV, we're doing so in educational environments and not with a culture of criminality. Making sure that we're teaching students good character, and we're handling things fairly and justly, recognizing we're dealing with children. Also, looking at the certification of teachers and making sure that it's, you know, not too strenuous or not too difficult to fill certain positions. We need 17 teachers, and right now, the qualifications really don't match what 17 teachers do. So the hope is that we can get some more people who may be looking for second careers, who are coming out of science labs or coming out of fields that would really, really benefit students to have the opportunity without paying for multiple years of college to go different routes and be able to teach our students successfully. In addition, we're also making sure that every district is being judged fairly when it comes to school construction funding and school funding, because that's another really big area that small districts like us are up against. We have our great ideas. We have the things that we want to accomplish. And sometimes, that's really, really hard to come by simply because of the fiscal constraints. So we're trying to work with some pre-holders and other legislators to get support for more school funding for districts like ours. It's really important whenever we're looking at assessment to keep in mind that numbers are great and quantifying success is important. But as Albert Einstein said, "Not everything that counts can be counted", and "Not everything that can be counted counts." And our district realized that the last two weeks. We had suffered the loss of an incredible, incredible educator, someone via the pleasure of teaching with, co-teaching with myself. We went to peer group together and spent a couple retreat weekends on the floor of the Emergency Squad Building when that's where we took the students for the peer group retreat. And certainly, Mr. Frusciato was a gifted, gifted, talented, just super-intelligent teacher who dedicated his entire life to education. Friday night at his service, that was evident because as people looked around the room, that was just covered with awards and honors and medals and ribbons. To just look at that after 41 years, I wanted to just yell at him, "You classic overachiever. You are always an overachiever." And that's what he did. He got a lifetime of passion and of giving into 41 really short years. And it's just so important to be reminded that, you know, when his students, many of whom are now adults and they were with him 2004, 2005, when they were coming to that service to memorialize him, it wasn't that, you know, "Mr. Frusciato helped me get a 5 on my AP test", or "Mr. Frusciato helped me really get into a certain college by writing a recommendation letter", it was, you know, "He helped me discover what I really love to do. I'm in a job now that I absolutely love because that's what he demonstrated in his work." So that's really the whole other factor of what we have to remember here. And that's where we get to the tone of our story, right? Because the tone of our district is evident. It's compassion and it's rigor in student-centered instructional environments by a staff that is always cheering our students on, always, at each and every step of their educational journey. And for those of you with adult children, you know it goes super fast, way too fast. If only I could turn back the hands of time. And then we have those smiles of success. You just walk into a classroom, and you just see it. You know what's happening. The learning is there. Our 2020 vision of the Linners Public Schools is in full motion. So you haven't seen a lot of that in the forefront, but wow is it going full speed ahead behind the scenes. We are at a place whereby we are looking to go out to bid on our construction work in mid-January, so right after the holiday season passes us. We're forging ahead with that. We hope to be breaking rounds and for you to see some of those construction trucks at Columbus and Roosevelt School in the early spring. And from that point on, we are looking at, you know, essentially two years of getting a design unlike this district has ever seen before. We will continue to share the information with you as soon as we get it into user-friendly versions. So as many of you may know, if you've ever had work done on your house or if you're in architecture, the papers that I get are tabletop size. They take up lots and lots of space. But now we're starting to get user-friendly versions, and we're quote-unquote, we'll continue to post them. So the most recent ones are available on our website, and we encourage you to continue to come to our meetings, come to township meetings to say a prize and address of all that's happening there. We're all part of the ongoing story. And as I told my staff at the start of the year, just make it happen and shock everyone. That's what we're going to do. So I thank you so much for your time tonight and for letting me talk to you about the Linners Public Schools.